Okay, we're going to call a meeting to order. And the first order of business is the approval of minutes from our May 27th meeting, which were emailed to us. So unless anybody has corrections or additions, I'll entertain a motion to approve without reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes without reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, on the regular agenda, we're going to-
Who seconded?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I wasn't trying to overlook your second. Okay, on the regular agenda, we are going to take case 2025-06 because the interpreter is not here. And it's believed that we would need the interpreter for 2505. So we'll take 2506 first, and this is at 469 Eastern Avenue. And the surrender Sani is the petitioner. Introduce yourselves and state your case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the members. My name is Rebecca Edmondson Coral. I'm counsel for Mr. Surrender Sani, here who is the owner of Broadway Variety 2, which is located at 469 Eastern Ave., right at the kind of the crux of Broadway and Eastern Ave., right across from the Beth Israel Urgent Care and Walgreens. They, Mr. Sani has applied for, from the liquor commission, the licensing commission, to move from a beer and wine license to an all liquor license. They were approved in January 2025, but this area of the city is zoned as a residential area. Therefore, it will require a special permit in order to move from the current non-conforming use of a beer and wine license to a full liquor license. So we are here before you today requesting this special permit.
A question for you. Just how long have you been in business as your store is currently configured right now with a beer and wine license?
We've been there since 2015.
2015. Any incidents that you can recall related to any of this?
Never been, nothing, no problems at all.
Thank you.
Are there any changes you need to do to switch over to a full liquor store?
No, the building is just there the way it is. We're just gonna, we have a lot more wine there right now. So we don't really sell too much wine, so we're just gonna cut that stuff down and add more liquor to it, that's all. And we have some beers that we put on the floor that we could move it to the back room. And just to, just, that's all we're doing. We're not doing anything other construction work, nothing. Just staying the way it is, just rearranging the store to add liquor in there, that's all it is.
And what are your current hours?
We open 9:30 to 11:00 Monday to Saturday, and 12:00 to 11:00 on Sunday.
Okay. Do you plan on keeping those same hours?
Same hours, yeah.
Thank you.
Is there beer and wine in the Walgreens across the street?
No.
Just yourself?
Just myself.
And what was in that property before you were there? Was it a wine shop?
It was a wine shop, too.
Great, thank you. I'd like to make an emotion to approve this special permit for this-
A second to motion. Moved and seconded that we approve the, or that we recommend approval of the petition. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Petition is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Before you head out, just, we'll see you at the zoning board meeting July 8th.
Yes, July 8th.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right. Case 2025-8 at 50 Heard Street. The petitioner is David Gamble. Come forward, introduce yourself and make your case.
This isn't to garner sympathy.
I'd use them for sympathy.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is David Gamble. I'm an architect and urban planner with Gamble Associates. We're based in Cambridge. We focus on neighborhood revaluation and community development.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Alex Train. I serve currently as the chief operating officer for La Collaborativa in Chelsea. I'm the owner and proposed developer of the 50 Heard project. And so tonight, you know, we're before you to seek zoning relief in order to accommodate a new redevelopment project that we're setting out. We're gonna share a bit with you about the project goals, and then David will delve into the design objectives as well as the ultimate vision for the redevelopment of this space. So as many of you know, 50 Heard Street is situated in the R2 residential district. It currently is comprised of a vacant three-unit home that was recently sold in May of 2024 to La Collaborativa by the former owner, who subsequently retired and moved out of state. So at that point in time, you know, the organization sought to really bolster economic development infrastructure within the community to improve access to living wage jobs, catalyze small businesses, and ensure that all residents have access to high-quality education. And so with that, you know, set of goals, we retained David's firm in order to conduct a neighborhood visioning process and ultimately a design exercise to accomplish a redevelopment scheme that we're really proud of and we're really excited to show you. So in total, you know, the floor plan calls for a four-story structure that will eventually house our new workforce training, vocational education, and small business development programming. Over the last year, we've purposely scaled a lot of that to meet the needs of existing residents and help residents boost their income and achieve economic self-sufficiency. So with that, I'll turn it over to David to dive into the design process.
Thanks, Alex. Can you hear me okay? Also here is other members of the leadership team from La Collaborativa. So as Alex has mentioned, it's a fairly small building adjacent to two existing buildings that La Collaborativa currently has, which begin to form a bit of a campus. And I want to talk about that and the importance of the buildings having a dialogue with one another. Next, please. It is adjacent to a new Silver Line stop, or maybe not even that new anymore, which is clearly putting development pressures in the orbit of the station. We're, of course, in City Hall, slightly off the screen to the bottom. But what you see here in the profile line is the 12,200 square foot, yes, four-story building, but also on a site that changes grade, which is an important consideration regarding building height. And central to the design of the building is the creation of a public space, a placita, that has a dialogue with the existing two buildings. So their survival center and the eco center, combined with the new Economic Development Center, start to form this public space. Next. So in relationship to transit, as you know, we are asking for parking relief. We are just a few steps from the Silver Line itself, the T Station, the rail line there, and of course, La Collaborativa has, I think, 128 surface parking spaces below Route 1A, which is a very important consideration, not only for the parking demand, but also for the events that La Collaborativa holds in terms of servicing their population. Next, please. Here it is in the project site. Not everything is rosy. Of course, it also happens to fit within the floodplain. And so many of the design decisions that we created are attempting to alleviate that burden, and much of our landscape strategy is trying to address issues of stormwater. Next, please. How are we doing that? Well, we're putting the mechanicals above that lower level. It's not really a basement. It's a lower level that's accessed from the south side of the building. So to your left is the plaza, to your right is the Heard Street. This is a longitudinal section through the building. Pretty simple plan. It's a small building, so on one side are workshops that face south, and on the Heard Street side, there are classrooms that face the street with the building core in the center. Next, please. So what is there today? As Alex mentioned, it is a four-story, three-and-a-half, four-story residential building. That image on the lower right is the driveway to the back of the site, which is currently used to park the garage, which is the image on your lower left. So that view is actually important because that becomes a public passage through the site. This is actually a through-block connection between Heard Street and the street opposite. Next, please. We did look at possible adaptive reuse for the building, but it just wasn't possible given the demands of congregation for the educational facility. I don't want to drill down too much into the details, but to my point about the diagram of the building, which you see in the center is the stair and the elevator. On either side are the workshops. There's the ones to the Heard Street and the ones to the plaza side. Those become kind of the activity zones, the classrooms that activate the building. And at the bottom of the page is that ramp, the gently sloping ramp that navigates about five feet from Heard Street to the plaza level. The massing of the building then plays out like this. Essentially, because of that grade change, the building is situated kind of into the land, so it's not seen as four stories from above. This is a view taken from the south side, looking towards this more transparent portion of the building, which are these carpentry workshops, HVAC workshops. So the potentially noisy things are to the back, away from the residential neighborhood, closer to the plaza. It faces south, so therefore, we have to have some strategies to address heat gain. But at the same time, you really want those programs to be visible because it is actually the focus of the project. You're also seeing in this image an inclined plane. We are looking at the viability of adding solar. Interestingly enough, the existing buildings that they have, the survival center, would be much better suited to that because, of course, it's a much larger area. Our building footprint is only about 6,000 square feet. It's actually pretty tight. Next, please. So what are we doing architecturally in terms of urban design to help it fit, help a non-residential building fit into a residential neighborhood? A step back actually makes a very big difference. And so we've stepped back, not setback, but stepped back at the third floor, about five feet to provide a terrace. The intention is to align that more or less with the triple deckers on either side, so there's a datum line that's created. We are showing a different material for that step back. We're not sure what that is, but essentially, it's an intention to try to differentiate the massing. And then we also have a canopy. This is not, Heard Street is not the main entrance to the building. We actually don't want people to think that's the case. The entrance is from the plaza side, but nevertheless, there is a emergency stair that comes out from that, from that side there. From the south side, then, next image, it's a very different expression. This would be seen potentially from Route 1A if you could get up that high and there wasn't a fence in front. But the opportunity to celebrate La Collaborativa's logo, their colors, that would be a very large wayfinding sign that could be seen from the Silver Line stop to help draw people into the space. And importantly, I would say essentially, the space in the foreground is this plaza that addresses rainwater, it becomes a place of interior and exterior integration, and the whole public realm interface is navigated or negotiated by the, an overhead trellis that we're beginning to design more clearly. So this is a view of the plaza. Next, please. With respect to its sighting, then, if you blur your eyes, it may look exactly like the building that's there today, but it's not quite. It's a little bit longer in the gray tone, and what you're seeing there toward in the middle of the image is all of the dimensional criteria for this plaza that we're working very hard to maintain. Next, please. A few more slides hanging there. I know you always have very long agendas. Next, and yeah, if you could go back one, and I'd like my engineer, Bill, to come up, and he can talk a little bit more, the civil engineer, about the strategies of addressing the water that forms, I think, even today in that space.
Good evening. My name is Bill Maher with Nitro Engineering, and we are the civil engineer for the property. And as you can see, as shown on this plan here, our intent is to, number one, use the existing utilities in Heard Street for our water, for domestic and fire protection use, as well as connecting our proposed sewer system or service from the, from the building into the existing sewer system in Heard Street. We will be providing an erosion control plan, as we do with every project. And because this project does lie within a floodplain, it will be enhanced a little bit more because we do realize that we need Conservation Commission approval. We are working with the architect and the landscape architect to soften the exterior somewhat to allow some permeable behaviors, you know, things of that nature, to allow some recharge. We're looking at some underground recharge components, chambers, things of that nature, working with the geotech engineer on the existing water table, the soil conditions, and so forth, and possibly have some sort of overflow, you know, from the rear of the site, because it does naturally grade from Heard Street to the rear of the site there, and then connect into the, it's actually a combined storm drain system or sewer system in Heard Street that takes both sewer and runoff in the same pipe. We have had conversations with the existing DPW and city engineer about some of our strategies, and they seem to be unfavorable with our approach at this time.
Next slide. Yep, okay, I think that's great. Thank you, Bill. You can go to the next slide, please. One more. Yeah. So in terms of the landscape plan, to Bill's point, we are imagining that it's not entirely a hardscape. It will be used for events and performances and likely some small classroom gatherings. We are trying to provide a landscape buffer around the existing buildings that will actually green them up a little bit more and use the drainage alignments from the adjacent roof drains to help feed water into the landscape there when it rains. Next, please. The ambition is, are to use drought-tolerant plants that also have a good deal of color. We could see this almost as a small urban garden is the aspiration. Next, please. Colors, so it will be landscaped around the edges. Next. And relative to, I think, what you're most interested in, which are the number of dimensional tolerances that we're hoping for some graciousness, but for, the project becomes infeasible. So we have one slide for each of the demands, and we can go through them one at a time. And of course, I'm sure you have more questions if they're not answered through the presentation. Next, please. So we've aggregated what's required and what's proposed, and it might be a little bit clearer if we go one at a time here. So the rear yard setback, of course, if we maintain that, there would be no placita. So the goal is actually to set the building back farther, which allows us to have a, it's probably a space about the size of this room, actually, from that back wall to where we are here, not the entirety of the room, but that would be about the size of the plaza. So the proposal is to set it back 37 feet as opposed to the 20-foot that's required. Next, please. The parking requirements, as said previously, so the 128 spaces that are below Route 128 are very close to the site. We see the passage between the Economic Development Center, and that space is being improved with a better crosswalk. I'm sure you've witnessed cars that queue up as a silver line goes through or a train that's right in this area, so enhancing pedestrian movement. There is an aspiration to also increase blue bikes in this location. There's plenty of space to fit those if possible, but really, within a 300-foot walk, you're at the edge of the parking area. Of course, what you're not seeing is the Route 1A overhead. This is cut through the columns of the space. Next, please. Minimum lot size? Well, it's non-conforming now to its current condition. Next, please. The side yard setbacks, I'm trying to do the math right here. It's a matter of inches, but in order to get the corridor inside the building to be ADA accessible and to get the minimum requirement sizes for the workshops, we're sort of constrained. We tried to pull the building in as close as we could, and actually, an early dialogue with John De Priest helped us think about what's the best side for the building entrance, given the fairly close proximity of the neighbors. I mean, this is an urban area. Next, please. We did have a little model. It was a little too windy to bring it, but we're happy to bring it back if you'd like to see it in its physical nature. But in terms of minimum frontage, again, it's kind of non-conforming, 60 feet required. The existing side is 50. FAR, that is a typo. It is required of one, we are over the density, but we have tried through the step backs and extending the building to mitigate that sense of scale on the residential abutters and in the neighborhood in general. In terms of the elevations, these are still very conceptual, but what's important to see is that horizontal line towards the bottom, which allows you to see that the lower level and the second level actually straddle the topographic conditions. So the floor-to-floor heights are almost 11 feet in order to enable the mechanical equipment to function properly, allow the classroom spaces to be generous, but because we are, I would say, nesting the building into the landscape, that perception of height is diminished. And you can see on the left side of your screen, the profile of the neighbor, which is the triple decker, more or less aligns with the parapet of our building. With a maximum lot coverage, again, there is a slight increase of 3.8% there. And this is the total area summary. And that may be the last demand. Yes, we do have an appendix that has lots more renderings and pictures, but I think we can end it there and open it up for discussion. Thank you.
On slide 25, is that an eight-foot or so setback on each side?
The side yard setback on the west side is 8.89 inches. Yeah, it's on one side.
Okay. And setback on the other side is?
I think it may be in the site plan. I think we matched what was required of 10 feet.
Okay.
We initially had the entrance on the other side, but that was even, there's less space between that and the abutter.
Yeah, and just for context, so one of the sides, as David mentioned, will function as the main egress. David alluded to this during the presentation. You know, the sort of access requirements for the site will entail everybody accessing the building from the existing survival center site, so there won't be any access permitted off a Heard Street proper to minimize neighborhood impacts. There will be an emergency exit. And secondly, the opposite setback will include a landscape kind of vegetated buffer that we're looking to provide some screening and insulation for the adjacent property.
How have the neighbors reacted? Have they provided any letters of support?
That's a great question. So we've had a number of discussions with the surrounding neighbors, including direct abutters and folks in the broader neighborhood, including one-on-one meetings, that we've had probably 15 to 20 of at this stage, as well as two larger community meetings where we extended invitations to the abutters. Generally, there's excitement in the neighborhood for the project. There are a number of neighbors that have benefited from the education and workforce training programs that we implement currently. There was also a lot of input provided around the plaza design, so we do envision that the plaza separating the two buildings will function as a public space and be open to the surrounding neighborhood. So we're excited to see some enthusiasm about that as well, and we'd be happy to supply letters of support after the meeting.
Related to that, some questions about the plaza and how that will interface with the proposed structure and also the collection of homes that are immediately to the right if you're facing that direction. What's the proposal for, you know, creating some sort of barrier between those properties, or is there an intent to do that?
Yeah, that's also a great question, because if this is a public space, you don't want it to get too loud or too transparent, otherwise there are unintended impacts with the abutters. So we're imagining right now it's a six-foot solid fence. It might have some coloration associated with it, but it's intentionally replacing, if you could go to the existing photographs early in the presentation, there is a fence there now. It's somewhat dilapidated. It's wood. We're imagining a wood fence also. Yeah, so the image on the lower right gives you a sense of what that looks like. So the goal is to reinforce that along the ramp side, and on the opposite side also there is an existing fence. We, of course, would not, are not proposing a chain link fence on Heard Street, but rather having an extension of the sidewalk, which would be a more gracious public realm interface there. So defining the placita, but also reinforcing the pedestrian pathways through the property.
Okay, and about those pedestrian pathways through the property, is that gonna be basically only pedestrians? I see there's an alley there, nothing large enough that, say, a vehicle could fit through?
No. No, the ramp is about six-and-a-half feet wide, but not wide enough for a car, unless it's a Ugo or something.
I've seen some construction or construction structures going on on-site. Could you explain what kind of work is going on?
You mean on the existing site currently?
Yes.
So we don't have any major construction that's ongoing right now. About a week, week and a half ago, we had a contractor replacing some glass panels to one of the awnings to one of our buildings. And then separate from that, David's subconsultant team has mobilized to conduct a subsurface investigation. So there's about a four-day period when there was a drill rig on-site collecting soil samples for our environmental analysis. But outside of that, right now, there is no ongoing construction.
Drill rig on-site in a wetlands without contacting the Conservation Commission?
That's my understanding, yeah. McVeil, our subconsultant, I think, did reach out.
But no, nobody contacted me. I'm a conservation agent, nobody contacted me at all.
Okay, we can follow up with them on it.
Well, you've just admitted to a violation.
Was there any consideration put towards, the design is incredibly modern, it's very clean and efficient, but it is very noticeably different from the housing structures adjacent to it. Is there any thought to making especially that back end that backs onto Heard Street a little bit more conforming in terms of visual appeal to its neighbors? And especially because you have the dual fronts, in a sense, you know what I mean? Which is your nod to the height. It's, it's, it looks, visually, it looks like another story above the other buildings. Is there a- Is there a way to incorporate a slightly more traditional design to the back end so that it looks like it belongs there?
Can you describe what you think would make it more traditional aesthetic?
Your... I love the wood, the use of the wood, at least in this imagery. What is the... Is it metal or plastic for that siding that's on the other part of the building?
The light gray color that you're seeing is anticipated to be metal panels.
Yep. So, to... In my opinion, the roof... A roof line that changes to a more sloped roof line would be more traditional. Your window treatment, your sort of approach to windows would also, if you have something that looks like it's at nod to the sort of history of the region, that would also give you a little bit more of that integrated look. And the tiling on the front of the building is also very incongruous with what traditionally is in that area. So, just thoughts on design feedback for how the street reads, and especially if that's not an entrance right now. It visually looks like an entrance, even though you guys have done a great job on explaining that it's not, but it looks like an entrance.
Okay, that's fair. I will say that what you're seeing in the orange pattern is an attempt to also celebrate their culture and the culture of the population they serve, which granted, may not be part of this neighborhood, but is certainly part of the ambition of La Collaborativa. But we're still working on that. Your other comments are well noted.
I thought that you'd also incorporated that La Collaborativa logo into the tower aspect of the building itself, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, on the south facade, but much larger in scale, because it actually can't be seen from most of the neighborhood, only when you're up maybe from the cupola of this building or on Route 1A, which has a solid wall, unfortunately. But thank you.
Regina, relative to your question about the door on Heard Street, David and I had a discussion relative to the design of this, and we thought it was best to keep at least some form of residential appearance to it. And, you know, all those doors, all those structures that have front doors, we thought it best to at least leave a door there, even if only used for emergency or rare access.
These are all great points, but if I may make a comment about the roof slope. So, most of the neighbors, not all of them, but many of them are a flat roof because they are triple-deckers. There are some that are sloped and peaked. To do so on this elevation would compromise quite a bit of the square footage on the top floor, which is another classroom. I mean, we could take a look at what that looks like formally, but certainly, the building in the foreground has a peak. The three or four afterwards are flat roof, but...
Well, may I suggest, then, if it's a question of compromising space and your ideas to maximize space, think about then a parapet. You know what I mean? To incorporate that into your design structure. It's... Just, you know, in thought process on that one.
Okay, thanks.
I have a large-picture question for you guys here, and I mean, this is definitely talking about what your future ambitions are for this area. There's five houses that amounted to, you know, essentially comprise that corner that's on Heard Street and then crossing over there. Do you have ambitions to create a one unified property there?
No, that's a great urban design question. I think, you know, right now, our major focal point is executing this project. This is a sizable, you know, undertaking for us. It's our major priority for the next two fiscal years. We touched on this earlier briefly, but, you know, the construction timeline for this project would span around eighteen months, and we're currently in the midst of a capital financing campaign. And so, that's a few years, I think, down the line. We would definitely be interested in working with the city to understand what the urban design goals for this neighborhood are, especially now that we have the silver line. I think from an organization's perspective, we're very concerned about the neighborhood changing, you know, with ongoing development that may not be designed to accommodate our existing residents. So, we'd certainly be interested in working with the city to identify, you know, equitable solutions for everyone.
Any discussions with those property owners about their appetite for selling, or have you had those kind of conversations?
No, not at this point. The two directly behind the Survival Center, they're two owner-occupied properties, one of which is a retired couple, the second, which is a, you know, family that has lived there for maybe fifteen or so years. So, our understanding is they're looking to, you know, continue staying there, and we're really happy to have them as neighbors.
And through your neighborhood conversations, would you count those folks as the supporters of this project?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, I got a couple of questions. How come there's not a loading dock? If you guys are going to be having a workshop, there's no loading dock. What are you guys doing with trash? What's the weight of the building? Because the fact that you put all the mechanicals up, which is what they did in Seaport because of weight, and it's in a flood district. I also have questions about trash. I have questions about the size, because at one point in your proposal, you were only saying you were going to employ eight people in a twelve-thousand-square-foot building, so I have concerns about security. I have concerns that you are very vague about landscaping, lighting, building supply. I mean, it's... I understand what you want to do, and I understand we're concentrating a lot on the outside of the plaza, but nobody's concentrating on what's going on inside the building or how you're going to move equipment around, power. You're going to need, you know, water. You have multiple bathrooms, so I, you know... What else do I have to... And I'm a little concerned about the density of the space, because it does change the neighborhood quite a bit. And so, I understand the work that you guys do, and it's important, but it's a pretty big building.
I could try to address many of those if you can go to a ground-floor plan. It's a big building, but it's not much bigger than what's there now. That's an important thing to notice. If you go to the ground-floor plan, so you're absolutely right, there are loading requirements. What we see is the ground-floor plaza. Let me go to the ground-floor floor plan that has more detail. So, the workshop on the lowest level has a very large garage door that opens up onto the plaza. So, that is essentially that lowest-level workshop is the input for the material palette. I was just at the Carpenters Union Building down by Ninety-three South, where actually La Collaborativa has their current students' travel to. And they store their materials largely for the woodshop, are four-by-eight sheets of plywood, and they fit on steel racks. So, the bulk of the lowest-level workshop is essentially the intake of that. Although the garage door does open, and we see that placita forming a space for the students, that's essentially the input. We do have bathrooms on every level, including two on the ground floor and two on the upper floor because of the student demands. We have more than are needed, but we think it's appropriate for the educational use. Here, you're seeing the entrance there from the plaza side.
Is there a driveway access from the other building, is what you're saying, into this garage and the plaza area?
It's not a driveway access. No.
The building you're proposing, but to get to the workshop?
To get to the workshop? How do they get to the workshop?
So, forklifts are what's typically used to move their things around. And the alleyway between their two buildings is about twelve feet now, but there's no intention to get service vehicles or anything to go through that. The comment about weight is a great one, and in light of the fact that this is an educational facility, we have eleven-foot floor-to-floor heights, we are proposing an all-steel structure, which will go up faster, but it also has placed demands on the soil conditions. So, hence the drilling and McVeil and Nitch and all the engineering that we're doing to try to make sure that this can touch down as delicately as possible on a landscape that is compromised soils. So, we are doing a steel building that will help with sound absorption and noise, as well as the clearances that are required. Trash, we haven't actually shown on these drawings. I think that's a great point. The lighting, we want to make sure that it's not overwhelming to the neighbors, but still provide sufficient space for outdoor activities, so we have a lot to work through on those points.
Have you looked into the possibility of adding a more robust stormwater system down the road as flooding becomes more problematic? And potentially extending the life of the structures around you by taking on more of that load? Have you looked into some more creative solutions that might not be possible in your current budget, but that you could implement as that concern becomes a bigger one?
We can look at that, absolutely. Yeah, for now, we've looked at the entirety of the La Collaborativa parcel at the moment.
Given that this is an area prone to flooding, is it possible that the area on either side and plaza are a permeable substance, so water can pass through?
That's the goal, yeah. I think what we've shown right here in terms of the entryway area, you know, we're committed to making that some type of permeable surface. The opposite setback area would all be landscaped, whether that's native plant species or native grasses, you know, we're going to flesh out in our landscaping plan. I think the other element to point out that David referenced earlier is that we are designing the first floor to be almost purposefully floodable. You know, we recognize that with sea level rise and coastal storm surge, this area will be susceptible to flooding. We're not planning on using that space with any type of higher-end equipment. The larger training facilities will be on the second and third floors, so that mechanical equipment is out of the floodplain. The ground-floor facility will be used as a multipurpose educational classroom with lower-value assets and design, so it could accommodate flooding in the event that sea level rise does affect the property.
And if I can just add, it's a very light tone, but if you see those blue bands that are crossing diagonally across the placita, so those are runnels. They're used to allow the water to run off directly into the planters. And the use of permeable pavers, one has to be a little bit careful, because they can also be... They can stymie accessibility, issues of accessibility, so we're trying to be judicious about where those are located. Much of the placita will likely be scored concrete, just because it's going to be patterned, and then we'll combine that with a combination of runnels and permeable pavers.
What hours do you envision this building being used for?
That's a great question. So, you know, right now, our normal business hours are generally ten AM to six PM. We do have a small number of classes, primarily English-language classes and citizenship classes, that run until seven PM to eight PM. However, we're committed to making sure that our, you know, more impactful activities, particularly the building trades, workforce training, are set during hours that don't impact the surrounding neighborhood.
How many folks do you see in a classroom at a time or in the building at one time?
Sure, that's a great question. So, in general, we're designing most, but not all, of the classrooms to accommodate up to twenty students at a time. Our typical class size is around twelve to fifteen for most classes. Some of our healthcare training programs serve up to twenty, and generally speaking, we'll have around eight full-time staff that'll be housed in this facility, managing that portfolio.
How many classrooms? Alex, how many classrooms are you hoping to have in this building?
So, we'll have about six in total. That includes the two workshops on the second and third floors, as well as multipurpose educational space on the first floor and the fourth floor, along with some office space. The ground floor also has a lobby and small welcoming area with lockers, restrooms, as well as an art gallery area for local artists.
If this building was full of classroom space and people and things going on, what would the anticipated amount of people capacity for people that would be in this building at its busiest time?
Probably busiest time would be somewhere around, you know, hundred-sixty to hundred-eighty, maximum, if we had all classrooms running simultaneously. Generally, in our facility today, we will have anywhere from three to four classrooms running simultaneously, just given some of the staffing limitations. This will be, you know, facility that will be designed to accommodate very specific workforce training with specialized equipment. So, a lot of those programs are grant-funded, you know, we operate them to the extent that we can operate them as funding allows. So, I think if we're up to us, we'd run, you know, as many as we could each year, but obviously, funding limits that and would limit the intensity of the use in the building.
Do you have any plans to use this space for events in addition to classes as well?
Like indoor events?
Yep. You mentioned concerts and things like that in the placita?
No type of indoor events, no. I think we would picture that the placita would be used for as a neighborhood gathering location, as well as for some smaller ancillary events. For instance, we hold a staff cookout each summer. I could picture that we'd host that in the placita area, as well as have outdoor classroom space for some of the educators we work with.
Some questions for you about transportation and parking. So, the configuration, obviously, here is you're sitting down right in a pretty densely-packed neighborhood, and particularly Heard Street being a one-way right there. I know it's been said that there's no plan to have any kind of entrance there. Do you have any plans to try and actively stop people from dropping off there? Because what I can see happening, if people were to get, you know, be able to do that, you would create a real jam up on a street that's already pretty tight. And so, A, my question is how, do you have any plans to offset that? And then, I also have questions about the parking that you've got there that you're counting on under 1A. But if you could talk to me about Heard Street first, that'd be great.
Sure, no, absolutely. So, you know, Heard Street along the building frontage right now is signed as no parking. There is parking located elsewhere on the street. We've looked at bumping out the curb line there to preclude any type of drop-off activity. It's something we're examining right now, because directly opposite the site, there is a curb cut for one of our neighbors, so we just want to ensure that we're not adversely affecting access to their driveway in terms of the swings in and out of that driveway. But outside of that, you know, we're open to adding bollards, signage, pavement markings, as well as other streetscape modifications. We do intend to fully reconstruct the sidewalk along the frontage in conformance with city requirements, and would like to add some type of traffic calming there in particular, just given some of the speeding in the neighborhood.
That sounds great. And then, about under 1A where your larger parking is concentrated, so I'm assuming that's not property that you own at this point?
That's correct. That's property that we have a long-term lease with the Commonwealth under. So, we use that primarily for our food pantry. There's some ancillary staff parking over there. The majority of our staff use public transit or walk, given the high prevalence of Chelsea residents that we employ, and the vast majority of the members that we serve on a daily basis also walk or take public transit. I'll also note that all residents that are enrolled in our workforce training, educational and related programs receive MBTA benefits on a monthly basis, including the monthly link passes. So, we try our best to steer people towards public transit and reduce the reliance on personal vehicles.
Absolutely. But how solid are those leases? You say you have long-term leases for that parking space, you know, how solid are those? Are those subject to kind of the whims of the state ultimately, or, you know, what are your... How long are they?
Excellent question. So, we recently executed, as of this year, a new ten-year lease on that space that was enacted by the legislature, so it's solid during that period of time.
Okay, thank you.
That lease does not include a clawback by the state?
I would have to look at it and follow up with you on that question.
Yeah, my concern is that should the state move its workers back to the MITC center, they will want that parking space, those parking spaces back.
There's no clawback with regards to the MITC use. I do want to just double-check to make sure if, as long as we don't violate it, it wouldn't be clawed back. But there's nothing in there regarding the use of the space by the MITC.
Under the zoning regulations, they can't be counted toward the parking because they don't own it. Our zoning regulations say have to be within three-hundred feet and have to be owned. But I'm also concerned, because you're talking about a campus here, and you were... The Collaborativa was giving relief for the off-street parking on their building at the corner of Arlington and Sixth, and with fewer spaces than required, and those spaces aren't even being used, they're actually being blocked off with benches and tables. So, just exacerbating a problem.
No, absolutely, and we received your note on that issue. We're happy to comply with the permit requirements and are in the process of moving those temporary picnic tables that our staff put out.
Are there any members of the public who would like to address this petition? Please come forward and introduce yourself and tell us your thoughts. Yes, and speak into the mic. You can take it off the stand if you want.
Hi, my name is Joaquin Isom. I'm the owner of 54 Hurst Street, which is on the right-hand side of 50 Hurst Street. I guess I missed the letter. I never had a one-on-one with the Collaborativa, so I definitely don't support what's going on right now, for several reasons. One is, is Hurst Street a residential or a business buildings now? I guess that's just a question for you. It's a residential, so what they're planning to do right now, to me, is like they're doing business. So, they're changing the quiet residential area to a business area.
Could I respond? So, it is a residential district, an R2 district. However, this use is coming under a, you know, educational, like nonprofit use, which the state has codified as an exempt use, so it is allowed in any district. So, that's why the use per se isn't in question at this meeting.
Okay, I just want, like I said, I've been living at 54 Hurst Street over 17 years, quiet neighbor. So, that's one of my issues, the residential business. The second one is noise. 50 Hurst Street still is not part of the Collaborativa, and still, and up to this point, they've been having events, and that's creating a lot of noise. I'm right next to the, to 50 Hurst Street, and they've been having events up, all the way up to 11:00 p.m. And to me, that's, it's disturbing all my kids, neighbors. So, that's another reason that I'm against it. Three, parking spots. They're eliminating seven parking spaces at 50 Hurst Street right now, and that's with probably 12 people living at 50 Hurst Street. Now, I'm hearing that at any point, they can have up to 160 people in that building. Where are they gonna park? I know you have a lease under the bridge, but that's not, to me, that doesn't count as a parking spot. And you're mentioning that the buildings that you have, that you currently have, there are parking spaces there, but that doesn't count either, because I'm sure those parking spaces is for those buildings only, not for the, not for 50 Hurst Four, flooding. Since that Collaborativa built the new buildings at the front, not 50 Hurst Street, even though they're using 50 Hurst Street... Let me just back up. Flooding is an issue at 50 Hurst, at Hurst Street, period. Since they built the buildings, the new buildings in the Collaborativa, that made everything worse. Because one of the things that they did is that they, at 50 Hurst Street, I don't know if you know, they built a large basin to catch water from 50 Hurst Street, and also, they're using it to, for the stormwater runoff into 50 Hurst Street, and that's affecting the neighbors, especially me, because I guess I'm the only one here, except for my neighbors there. So, flooding is an issue. So, I know you talked about the flooding issue, but you just, you didn't go into details. What are you planning to do? I was hoping that when they were building the Collaborativa, they were going to add a pipe straight to the main storm sewer, but that didn't happen. Instead, they, they just dig the big, a big hole in the middle of the parking lot. And what is it doing? Yes, it's helping you, but guess what? That water is running under, under, under the ground to the other neighbors, and that's affecting us. So, those are the main four issues that I have. Two is the, I already said, the noise, you're blocking 50 Hurst Street, but I guess someone mentioned that that's not, that won't prevent anyone from gathering 50 Hurst Street, creating potential accidents, because now there's gonna be people gathering right outside of 50 Hurst Street. Those are my main issues. Like someone said here, I understand what you're doing, but I don't think that's the right location to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public session and resume questions and comments, if there be any.
If this ends up getting approved, I'd propose putting or adding on a condition of hours of operation, from like 8:00 a.m. through like 6:00 or 5:00, to ensure classes or other things aren't going on as people are trying to enter or fall asleep.
To that end, I mean, I'm kind of hearing here that, you know, it's a great idea and a great, you know, philosophy behind what's going on here, although I do think that there's some issues that need to be thought through a little bit more here before we really should be saying yes or no to this plan. I feel like there's a lot of questions that are open around what this is gonna mean for the neighborhood at large, and, you know, just generally, the logistics of it maybe might need a little bit more thought before we really give this that kind of vote.
And as a personal aside, I'm actually over on, I'm actually over on, over on, over on Eden Street, and some of those La Collaborativa parties can get a little, little noisy. So, just turning it down like after 10 o'clock, I'd personally appreciate it.
So, it sounds like we have a few different issues. We've got noise, neighborhood noise as something you guys really need to consider and work on. Hours of operation are important to the neighborhood. We have neighbors who are worried about the hole, basically a tri-block creating water issues that will need to be looked even further into, other than digging a hole and letting the underground water seep through the neighborhood. We have height issues and the look of the overall building on the back that faces into Heard Street. We have issues with access point, like people just ignoring it and doing drop-offs, pickups, or parking in that on Heard Street and creating traffic issues. So, we want you to look at those, those concerns as well, and try to figure out a good plan for coming back to us with, with that. Yeah, I think those are, those seem to be the big concerns with this particular plan. And then there's just a question, as the residents brought up, is are there any, do you guys have any other pieces of land that you had also thought of this particular campus, the educational part in Chelsea, that you would, would be open to using, other than this particular lot?
First off, I want to just extend our gratitude for the, the feedback relative to the, you know, height, the hours of operation, the noise, and some of the other legitimate issues. So, you know, I live two blocks away on Orange Street. I can also appreciate, you know, maintaining a quiet, sort of orderly neighborhood, and I will say that as a leadership team, we're committed to doing so. We're more than amenable to, you know, submitting a noise mitigation plan to the city for approval as part of this process, as well as moderating our hours of operation, whether that's 6:00 p.m. or 7:00 p.m. I think our only request would be to consider many of the working families that we serve that may only be able to attend night classes, and balance that with some of the neighborhood, neighborhood issues. Similarly, with stormwater management, we can certainly present a final plan for approval that's agreeable to the city's DPW. I will say that we have engineered our stormwater system onsite a little bit differently than characterized here tonight, and we'd be happy to share more detail about it. But I think all of those are very legitimate, and we right now don't own any additional property in Chelsea where we could envision a use like this, nor are we in a position to acquire property for the foreseeable future.
Thank you.
The drainage plan really needs to be approved by this board and by the Conservation Commission. So, it's not just the DPW.
Understood.
I'd like to make a proposal that you come back to us with some of the additional concerns addressed, and just kind of look over these plans. I think you guys have done a wonderful presentation, very thorough. Thank you for that, and especially with being able to answer a lot of the questions that we had. That was fantastic. But I'd like to, like to see some of these questions sort of work through and come back to us with them.
Absolutely.
So, this, I am making a proposal that we put this on pause till some of these issues are addressed, and you can appear before us again.
You need to, if the motion is to continue the case
Yes.
to an exact date, the July 22nd meeting, is that what you're proposing?
Yep, yep. That's the proposal.
Second?
I'll second it.
We've been seconded to continue the case in, is this on? Yeah, July 22nd meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that enough time for you? Yes.
Any opposed? See you in July.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Point of clarification, that is for both the recommendation to the ZBA and for the major site plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Lewis Street?
Yes.
All right, next we'll hear case 2025-5 at 24 Lewis Street. Good evening. Would you introduce yourselves and tell us your address and, and present your case?
Buenas tarde. My name is Adonai Cortez. Vivo en la 24 Lewis Street in Chelsea.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Adonai Cortez, and I live at 24 Lewis Street in Chelsea.
Buenas tarde. Mi nombre es Cecilia Flores, y vivo también en la 24 de Lewis Street in Chelsea.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cecilia Flores. I live at the same address, 24 Lewis Street in Chelsea.
Tell us what you would like to do.
¿Qué quisieran hacer ustedes? Que hablen a micrófono, las personas, y yo voy interpretando. ¿Cuál es la razón por la cual están acá?
La razón que estamos acá porque queremos hacer el parqueo de la casa, porque los han destruido muchos carros en la calle.
So, the main reason we are here is because we are seeking approval of a driveway opening permit, because in previous occasions, our cars had been crashed before while parked on the street.
Hace dos años, los hicieron robar un carro.
About two years ago, they tried to steal one of our cars.
Entonces, le pedimos que por favor lo puedan dar permiso de hacer el driveway.
So, we asking for your permission, your approval, if you can, if we can build that driveway, we're seeking approval for it.
Are you proposing some sort of retaining wall? Would the driveway be sloping, or would it be flat for the retaining wall, holding the earth back?
Este driveway que están proponiendo ustedes, va a ser plano, va a tener una inclinación, o va a ser plano?
Creo que va a tener una inclinación. Queremos hacer que vaya a morir como hacer.
You will have a little inclination, not completely flat.
Pero si lo dan permiso que lo hagan a la par, tiene que ser plano.
If you allow, if you give us the permission to build the driveway, so we can park one car parallel and next to the other one, we can agree of making the space flat, rather.
I'm sorry, it's not wide enough for two cars side by side.
Lo que dice el señor es que parece que no hay espacio suficiente para poder un carro al lado del otro paralelo. No hay espacio suficiente. That if that is the case, as heard, then we're willing to do, park one car after the other one in a straight line, if that is what is allowed.
Have you talked to your neighbor?
¿Ya hablaron con su vecino?
Sí, todos están de acuerdo que lo hagan.
Would you talk to our neighbors, and everybody's in agreement with from us building this driveway? Everybody agrees?
Is it possible to construct it with permeable pavers?
Say it one more time, sir.
Is it possible to construct it with permeable pavers or a permeable substance?
The floor itself, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
¿Es posible construirlo con algún material que sea permeable especial?
Yo no sé lo que usa la compañía ahora. Vamos a ver lo que usa, lo mejor cosa la compañía.
We're not very familiar with the latest materials the companies are using, but we're willing to consider different options if that is required.
Yeah, the idea would be to not take away the ability for the land to absorb water. If you pave it over with standard pavement, it pushes the water into someone else's yard, or adds more load to the stormwater system.
Lo que sucede a veces cuando hay arena, cuando el agua la absorbe, el agua puede expandirse, puede ser permeable. Un material que evite esa expansión del agua puede ser más beneficioso. Ellos estarían más de acuerdo con un material especial. De lo contrario, la arena absorbe y se puede expandar el agua.
What is the elevation from the sidewalk to the back of the area where they're proposing the driveway finishes?
The elevation from?
Yep. What is the grade, the grade elevation?
Elevation.
Yep.
I wonder how big the hill's gonna be?
Yes, exactly.
Since you're gonna put it in a hill, how big?
How, what's the, what's the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. What's the angle of the hill?
If you refer to the height itself, it's probably a 50 or 60-degree angle, if that is what you're referring to.
Yeah, it could.
¿Puedo mostrar ahí?
Yeah, there's a requirement for the, yeah, of course.
Should you remember, you refer to the height of the wall, about 50 or half a meter, 50 centimeters?
Oh, wait, please, sorry, grab the mic.
If you refer to the height of this particular wall, it is approximately half it is approximately half a meter, 50 centimeters, right here.
And I can confirm that when I took this picture, I measured the height of the wall was about 18 inches.
John, question for you is, if you took this picture, do you... What is the elevation of this property? Does it need a retaining wall to put in a driveway?
If the idea is just to give it a little of an incline, yes, it's going to need retaining walls to hold up the driveway.
Okay.
Otherwise, it might be treacherous trying to pull out backwards into the street if you're coming down a steep slope. You know, it's just a little more practical to make it flat.
If we approve, would you be willing to give up the right to park on the street? If we approve, would you give up the right to park on the street? Would that be okay?
Their park, their right to park on the street.
Right.
Absolutely, we're willing to do that.
I don't think we have the ability to make that a condition. We can't take someone's city parking sticker away.
No, if they get relief they need, they cannot get sticker parking.
No, they're meeting... So the zoning actually was just changed. The city council approved a zoning amendment last night. They're only needing relief for the location of the parking spots, I believe. So not within a front yard. It's being placed in the front yard. It's within five feet from a wall with windows and within five feet of a side lot line. They are meeting the number, which with this zoning amendment means if this were to get approved, they could put in the driveway and still receive residential parking stickers for the street.
So they still retain the ability to park on the street if it's approved?
Yes.
However, if we're removing a street spot, we're decreasing the number of available spots.
They're saying they had heard both versions before that they did have the right to retain the right to park on the street, and then they had heard different versions as well that they would lose the ability to park on the street if the project was approved, which caused a little bit of confusion. Because we are about Chelsea residents, and we do travel within the area. So for that matter, we should have the right to have a sticker and park on the street. And I have done my research as well, which says that we do have that right as well.
So up until last night, they would have lost their right to park on the street if they got this relief. However, the city council approved the zoning or zoning change last night that will allow them to keep the parking in this instance.
So they will retain the right to park it on the street, right? Because of the approval of this ordinance or that you're referring to?
So the net effect here would be that this would privatize a parking space, yes? Is that right, John? If we were to approve this, that would essentially privatize a parking space with no offset to the larger community?
You're losing... They'll be losing one on-street parking space, gaining two off-street parking spaces. So essentially, you gain one space on the street.
I'd like to make a proposal that we approve, but I want to make sure with conditions, particularly that they understand about the retaining walls and the pavers and the timeframe for this. Yeah. I just want to make sure he understands about the walls because that's very important. Because if he just takes that first wall down and doesn't put walls up on the side, that's what a retaining wall is, it'll collapse.
We are very aware of what your proposal meant, and that we were waiting for this approval, and we're willing to follow any requirements regarding the contention wall and what is required in terms of the water and the special type of material preventing the water from expanding.
I agree. I agree with every condition proposed except for completing the project in a certain timeframe. I'm a little bit concerned about precedent it sets, and it'll force people to complete jobs like fast and dirty. But I support pavers. I support retaining wall and not any sort of conditions on timing.
Okay, I'll second that if you hadn't already done that.
All right. Could I... Could I just make a suggestion to the condition about the retaining wall? That whatever plan... Or like, basically submit a plan for the retaining wall to the Department of Permitting and Land Use Planning. Just, yeah, just as a condition. Does that sound good?
Do they have to do that in that regard? Or...
Like, once this is officially approved, whenever they draw up the plans to put those retaining walls in, to just submit those plans to the Department of Permitting and Land Use Planning before they start their construction.
And that department is right here?
Yeah, yeah. It's myself, John.
Then we have to wait. What's the... Do we have to wait some time for this? Or in terms of they can...
No, you don't have to, like, wait. If this board recommends approval to the zoning board, you will go to the zoning board meeting, have a meeting similar to this one, and then they'll make a final decision. If they decide to approve, then, you know, you could start working on those plans. You'll have these conditions that you have to meet, one of them which is providing us a plan for the retaining wall, and you could just submit that to us, like, whenever you can.
So it'll be another meeting they have to make this proposal, which is with you guys?
Yeah, yeah. If the board recommends approval to the zoning board, they will have to come back to here on July 8th for a zoning board meeting, Tuesday, July 8th.
I see, here at this floor, same location?
Yeah, yeah, with the zoning board. And that board makes the final decision.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the zoning board with the standard conditions as applicable and the use of some form of permeable pavement or pavers, and that a plan of the retaining wall gets submitted to the Office of Land Use Development.
They don't have to schedule an appointment, right? Once they just come back on July 8th for that purpose, for the final approval, on July 8th?
Correct.
They're wondering if you guys can provide the specifics of the type of material, the companies that they offer this type of material, and they're willing to get that type of material? If specifics are provided, type of material, companies that offer that permeable type of... Or they would have to research themselves?
I would assume that contractors who do this type of work can provide those, that documentation. But they just need to be aware of the requirements.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Would you like to repeat it?
No, I think Sarah is good. So I approve... I would like to
Recommend.
recommend that we approve this with the conditions that Sarah has stated eloquently, better than myself. And, yeah, and let that go on to the zoning board.
Now we have a time requirement? All right. Does everybody understand? Second motion? Everybody understand? Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed. Motion carries. Your next meeting is July 8th.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, all.
Also, please feel free to stop by the office, speak to Hector, you know, we can help.
You guys heard downstairs, first floor?
Yeah, yeah. Or, yeah, first floor.
Thank you very much to all for your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
All right, we need to appoint somebody to sit on the Community Preservation Committee. Those who've already done it are excused.
I'll volunteer myself if people are amenable to it.
Volunteer. Any other volunteers? Yeah, you and I are... You're appointed, my dear.
I can just quickly speak to the Community Preservation Committee. The Community Preservation Committee basically reviews applications that relate to the creation of affordable housing, open space recreation, and historic preservation. And that Community Preservation Committee meets once a month, once a month for an hour, on the third Thursday of each month. In, yeah, in room 102. And, yeah, it's in person. And essentially, you'll... There are two cycles of, two application cycles, one in the fall, one in the spring. And I was talking to the Community Preservation Committee Coordinator, who said that usually you're handling around 15 applications each cycle, somewhere around that range. And also usually handling around a million in funds that gets distributed to these different projects. And you get a bunch of merch and swag, too, I guess, as well. I don't know. I'm hearing you get water bottles, bandanas, a tote bag, so, yeah.
Paperweights, all kinds of good stuff. Yeah, it is a nice committee, and they have money to award, so.
Yeah, there's no vote. It's just an appointment, so.
Oh, Chelsea Master Plan Updates is next.
All right, so as we talked about, you know, last meeting, we are trying to engage the board in discussions around the comprehensive plan and some specific topics that the plan will cover. This week, we are talking about transportation and mobility, which is still a large topic area we had asked board members to think about, in your opinion and your experience in the city. What do you see as strengths? What do you see as weaknesses as it relates to transportation and mobility? What would you like to see? What's your vision for this? I had sent to the board a few materials around recent projects that the city has been engaged in as it relates to transportation and mobility. Most of these projects have been focused on increasing safety for both drivers and pedestrians. I included a link to an MBTA study that looked at, you know, assessing whether or not it would make sense to extend the Silver Line. So those are some of the more recent projects that the city has been involved in. We do have some visuals here that I would like to pass over to Adam as he's been a bit more involved in some of the Vision Zero and Safe Streets projects that the city's involved in, so.
Yeah, so these are just some maps that I pulled from our Safe Streets For All project, which is looking to enhance the city's safety on the streets. Essentially, the goal is to reduce all traffic fatalities to zero. This map, just to provide some context, is just all the crashes that have occurred in the city of Chelsea in the past five years. So essentially, the bigger and redder the dot, the worse the injury was from the cause of the injury. The red Xs are where the fatal injuries have occurred. And then the shading is just like the density of crashes that occurred at that specific intersection. If you want to move on to the next map, it highlights some of the consultants' safety improve locations that they highlighted. So the ones that are highlighted in green are the ones the city is already looking to address. The ones that are in red are the top locations that the consultants would like the city to address next. And then the yellow locations are some of the other pretty densely crashed locations that would be prime for future investments for safety improvements. And then, just for some...
Sorry, can you, before you go on to the next... Do you have documentation on if bikes were involved in those?
Oh, yes, sorry.
What kind of crashes are they?
Yeah, so... So these are all crashes, including vehicular cyclist and pedestrian accidents. If we go to the... Back to the safety improvement locations, these are weighted based on what type of accident they were. So the high priority locations are weighted with like a 10x multiplier if it was a fatal or serious pedestrian or cyclist accident, 5x multiplier if it was a fatal or serious car accident, and then just a 1 and 2x multiplier if it was like minor injuries based on that. So it is factoring in what type of crash is occurring and the severity of the crash that occurred in those locations. Does that answer your question? Okay. Well, this is just for providing context. If you want to learn more about the Safe Streets For All project, we'll share the slides with you. This is just to shape the conversation for tonight and give you some context and maps to provide you with. So moving on to the Safe Streets project, these are just the goals that have been highlighted through the community engagement process so far. Welcome to have any input. If you guys want to fill out the survey for the Safe Streets For All project, that would be much appreciated for the consultants and the staff working on that.
How are you going to improve driver...
How are you going to improve drivers' behaviors?
Improving driver behavior.
I love it, but how the hell are you gonna do it?
Improving driver behavior, what they're trying to focus on is education, but then you can also design, like, it's, it's a broad goal that sort of encompasses all of the other goals, so prioritizing safe street design can influence driver behavior and improve it. Additionally, working on engaging and educating residents would be beneficial and hopefully improve driver behavior going into the future. Vision Zero isn't like a pipe dream, there are cities in the United States like Hoboken, New Jersey, that have achieved zero traffic fatalities in the past three consecutive years. So this is an achievable goal. And then to shape our conversation, we're just gonna throw up the questions that we asked at the last planning board meeting, which is, what are the strengths and weaknesses you see for transportation and mobility in Chelsea? And what are the opportunities and threats that you guys have thought about and wish to discuss here?
And also just wanna, you know, I think the goal of this discussion is to kind of synthesize some of the comments from the board members, so Sarah can like bring this back to the steering committee, and this can try to get incorporated into the master plan. And of course, you know, transportation and mobility are, is, you know, it's a broad category, it maybe doesn't just include like driving, though that is a major mode of transportation, but just the more recent projects that the city's been engaged in has, have been around improving driving, you know, safety for drivers and pedestrians. But I think we can also think beyond just like driving issues and stuff like that.
Just a general question about the map with the Xs on it, there was maybe five of them, are those in the works right now?
No, the Xs are where the fatal, fatal accidents occurred.
That, sorry, the red triangles?
No, the green ones are the ones where the current projects are going. The red are the, the projects that, that the consultants are the top priority for future investment.
Adam, can you, sorry, can you describe, describe what they have put in place to address those concerns? Are they moving out sidewalks, are they putting in bumps? What are they doing specifically to deal with these particular issues that they see? What are the proposals?
I don't know.
I've read some of that, so I just wanna.
Yeah, I don't know exactly like what's going on at each location, but I'm assuming they're taking the necessary steps that they need to, to make them safer, like you said, widening sidewalks and improving.
Well, one of my concerns with the question is the, I don't know, I call them mopeds or motorbikes, which are becoming quite popular, and so it's, it's different than a bicycle because I'm happy to share the road with anyone, but the concern is that some of them are because of, they're fairly aggressive usually, and also because they're, they have the speed of a bike and then, I mean, speed of somewhat of a small car, but they have very good mobility, so that's one of the, I think it's a strength and a weakness, I think it's a strength in the sense that it's interesting that that's what people are turning to, but I also think it's like bike paths, things like that, so they, because I work in Cambridge, people don't like to share the bike path with them. And I don't know how, I don't have a solution to that, I just think it's something we need to sort of, I don't, I don't see it a lot here, I see it more, but I think it will come into Chelsea because it's a really great inexpensive mode of transportation.
Technically, are motorized vehicles supposed to follow essentially motorbike laws, rules of the road, and ride on the roads, not on the bike lanes? I mean, do we have any rules around that as a city at this point in time?
I think it's driven by exactly what type of vehicle you're talking about, I mean, how powerful is it, how fast will it go?
Engine size, yeah.
Absolutely, does it take gas or, you know, whatever? Does it take a license plate? You know, because there are moped, you know, rules and things like that, but I think a lot of what Mimi's talking about are like the e-scooters and the e-bikes that don't require that, like they're deliberately kept at a low enough wattage where they don't require a plate? Or like a motorcycle license or anything like that to drive them, so.
Well, like bicycles, so like today I was driving in Cambridge, I wasn't going, but this bicyclist came up to me on my left-hand side, literally cut me off, and went, and then I'm like, holy cow, because I know, you know, bicyclists are supposed to follow traffic laws and, and they don't, basically, and I certainly don't think they should be in danger, but at the same time, I don't know how to address it, so I'm just saying that's one of the things that I would like the master plan, because I think it will be an interesting thing to happen.
So then it sounds like one of the things we should consider is not just putting in this plan for messing with streets and the roads and all the rest of it, but that education around bicyclists, motorized bikes, scooters, that that should be part of our master plan in addition, it's like rules of the road and keeping, you know, getting the education going in both the school systems and in Chelsea in general should be part, integrated into our, into our system rather than just stick the lanes in and good luck.
Absolutely, I think those.
What program did you have a look in New Jersey?
Yeah, so, yeah, so Vision Zero is just, it's an international, it's an international movement that essentially strives to eliminate traffic fatalities. It, it doesn't accept that these are just accidents that occur, but it tries to improve driver behavior through street design, through education efforts to help eliminate these, these traffic fatalities.
Yeah, maybe more of a public service announcement about all the factors that go into Vision Zero, just so that people are aware that the community's striving for a higher rating.
I would also, I've seen a few, few communities that have incorporated the pedestrian crossings that have the yellow flashing lights, but the lights are placed lower than normal lights, and what I've seen happening is the cars don't see them and they don't stop, like basically till somebody's in the middle of the crosswalk, which is just as dangerous, in fact, maybe more likely to get somebody killed. So we might want to take a look at if we are incorporating light systems for some of these like highly dangerous areas that we really are very, very careful about the design, that either we make the striping on the street another color altogether, that we're, we're really creating visibility, lights are in a position where oncoming cars can see them this, no matter what time of day it is, and that there's, that there's, what would I say? Is the other piece in the pie, that maybe a little unconventional approach to that in terms of striping for, like if it's a crossing, we used to call them zebra crossings in Ireland, and they would literally be like, you know, diagonal as opposed to straight black and white, so, I mean, just thinking outside the box on how we approach some of these lines.
Really do that in policy, right?
Do they do horizontally? Okay, yeah.
They put big red, they put big, you've seen them, big red boxes into the, so that, yeah, so the problem is, it's, I, I mean, I love signage, I love, but the problem is people just don't pay any attention to it. It's one of those feels, I always feel really bad when people do it because they, they, you know, like airports, where's, where's the, how do you get to gate A and there's all those giant signs says gate A? So it's, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard thing, it's one of those hard things to do, but no, I, but a big, in, big, bigger intersections are always helpful because it, but that's almost, would be very hard to do in Chelsea to have really, like in Cambridge, they eliminated a lot of parking, people are having, you know, fits, and you know, it's just that, I think that if you're gonna change the behavior of the driver, then you should also change the behavior of the bicyclists. It's not, and the pedestrian, well, it's hard, it's rare that a pedestrian gets hit, but it's more common that a bicyclist has fatal fatalities in Boston, and I'm not, I'm not blaming either the victim or the aggressor, but I'm just saying, that's why I laughed, because it's not just the driver, it's, you know, like when you drive, and I drive a lot, you know, these, I get it, they're, you know, tend to be younger, feel invincible, I get it, you know. When you hear about, anyway.
All right, I just wanted to say that in our meeting, which was what, over a month ago, in the Pallante meeting, the safety of streets was considered one of the most, the biggest concerns. I think the other one was, was housing availability. So this is way up there on the list of priorities for most of the residents, so it's certainly worthy of some better understanding.
And to that end, I mean, I see this around Chelsea a lot, you know, as a part of a master plan, it probably really is worth putting a lot of thought behind a deliberate plan about how to weave in these e-scooters and the bikes and things like that, so they're not out there in the mix with traffic and, you know, create, creating chaos for themselves and others. I mean, that's one of those things that a lot of the time people get those and don't really quite know what they're allowed to do or not do with them, and so they just ride them anywhere. I see people ride them on the sidewalks at times, you know, just because, because they can and no one's stopping it. But if we are creating a master plan, then, you know, then we have an opportunity to kind of build in some infrastructure.
Right.
That kind of addresses that some.
I mean, these maps are so helpful, but you know, we want, I'd like to know more. So is something like this available on the city's website so we can, you know, dig into it and see like what happened at number five, for instance, and understand where the real problem areas are so that we can.
One of the questions I had to that, to that as well as, on this, does it tell us, are these accidents that were accidents that involved two parties, or were any of these accidents that were just single, single vehicle or single individual issues? Like people crashed their own car or something like that? Yeah, on the other slide, it included all the accidents that have occurred. But, but it highlights the ones where an injury occurs. And on the next slide where you've got the priority ones, I mean, are these? These are just the priority locations based on like the weights that the consultants used, and based on essentially the map and like what types of accidents were occurring. To answer Sarah, your question, yes, we are putting together a website that is going to be a part of this Vision Zero process that, that highlights the, the locations that we're looking to improve and the types of improvements that we are looking to do at these locations as well, so.
I think we can get much more helpful feedback if we're dealing with real, you know, data, so.
Yeah, definitely. I can, I can try and send that link to Will or to you guys and, and definitely share that with you.
And also a map that shows all these transportation routes, you know, that are existing and proposed. It would be helpful to have all that in one, in one diagram so that we can discuss it, you know, just react to it. Now, I'm not sure if that is gonna be part of the Pallante process, or if this is the kind of thing that we should be doing, you know, within the planning board to discuss amongst ourselves, but that's, in my opinion, the most streamlined way to get a good discussion out of it, just to have some good graphics to go by.
I have one more idea I'd love to see in some of the like connector areas or massive intersections, is the idea of a pedestrian bridge, if, if that's even possible within a budget of some kind, like so for example, down where the high school is that connects into, across 16 into Everett and also into Prattville, and also down by basically where Chelsea ends from where the section eight housing is, the end of Chelsea behind Tambo, that connects over to the river into that area, the Mystic Mall, not the Mystic Mall, the other mall that we have there, I'd love to see a pedestrian bridge connecting that side of Chelsea to that water area and into that mall area would be, and, and just, that area is super dangerous to cross, and there are also, we have a little problem with some of our attics in that particular area, so that would kind of, that would just help get people from one side of 16 to the other, and it's one of the, those two intersections are extremely busy, plus the one down by the high school that connects across 16 is also extremely busy, so just thoughts on that one, and then.
Well, one thing, they're extremely busy because you have to have huge height requirements.
Yeah.
And then because of ADA.
You mean, they're extremely expensive.
They're extremely expensive, you have to have huge height requirements because of the trucks, you have to have ADA compliances, and my experience when I watch them is half the people don't even use them because they, they just don't want to go up the stairs or they go up the ramp. There's one at, you know, Bunker Hill College, I see it being ignored 90% of the time. So I agree that it's an interesting idea and it's a safety idea, but I.
Yeah, and I, I think they, these pedestrian bridges will contribute to the success of some of these high dense areas, like the MBTA Communities Act areas, you know, the, a lot of the parcels, if you can't get to say Market Basket easily, then it just makes it that much less of a successful project, so there's quite a few locations, I think, where these pedestrian bridges would help matters tremendously.
Yeah, the, I mean, the only other thing, Mimi, I hear you on expense, but we could, we could also incorporate a bike lane to, into someone like that where the waterfront is connected to as well, so, so you have one end of Chelsea that's almost cut off, right? That sort of corner of Chelsea that backs into Revere and Everett, you connect it to the Mill Hill, the Mill Water Way down there, it could, if it, if it's gonna be expensive, well then do it the right way with, with bike access on it as well. If they're putting in new infrastructure down in that area where the old, what's that, that new built, Forbes, that, it would connect that to, and in, and also our, our Chelsea waterfront, potentially, so that, that, I mean, just on a master planning level, it's just throwing out a thought process on something that might bring multiple areas together and create safety as well, so just.
Adding to that, I think going back to the questions, one of the strengths of Chelsea currently and has been is we're well connected to, by, through the MBTA. I think that being said, it's different segments that are connected, and if you need to get to like South Austin, you gotta do like three different transfers, and so thinking about are there opportunities to be better connected or more strategic about it is important? It's like using ferries, for example, or using waterways, I think is, would be a good.
Love to see ferry transportation out of Chelsea again.
What is, what's the conversation going on? I, I agree that the T is both a strength and a weakness here, and one of the things I think about is what the T's plans are for us, there's much media and talk about, you know, what they might do in terms of expanding the Silver Line or, you know, other things. Do we have any, any real intel from them about what their plans along those lines are, or is this planning process something that they're gonna use as a guide?
Yeah, John might know a bit more on that, I'm not as well, but.
Well, as the city's representative to the MBTA Advisory Board, I can tell you that the T just put out their capital improvement plan, and it's all maintenance and no expansion.
No expansion, okay, and so, but what they've been doing to around, you know, the reconfiguration of the bus lines and things like that, is that something that's also, you know, not, is that considered new projects, or is that?
Well, they have instituted some of those reconfigured lines, 104.
Right.
That used to run from Sullivan to Malden, now runs from Malden to the airport.
Mm-hmm.
Via Second Street.
Yeah, and I'm talking about that kind of thing, is that, that was something that's created a change, I don't know how great the change has been or not, but I just don't use it, but.
It's only been in effect for a short time, so I don't think they have a lot of data on it yet.
Is there any other plans like that in the works that they're already thinking about?
Is it project approved or RFP to extend our Silver Line out into, I think it was Assembly or Somerville?
Yeah, it was over to the casino, actually, because getting over the river would be the, the difficult part. It is, it's still being talked about whether it's been funded yet, I don't know. What was funded, I think Will sent it out to you, was the, the pedestrian bridge over the river.
It's been 10 years in the making.
To, from casino to Assembly Square, and that is being funded.
Will that tie into the bike path?
Yes, it will, it will.
It's a big win.
This is a big part of our master plan, is that we tie, we tie any of the. Some of our infrastructure into the stuff that connects you all the way through the North Shore as well, and, and think about that too, as well as, as, as something that we would want for our community.
Yeah, the more of this information that we can get in one place, even if it's not approved yet, but, you know, things that are proposed, it'll help us think how Chelsea can be reacting to some of the moves that are happening around us. Like, for instance, the ferry that may at some point touch down in Assembly Square, and then maybe somewhere in Charleston other than the Navy Yard downtown, East Boston, maybe up Chelsea Creek at some point. But there's some really progressive things happening in Cambridge, I just learned about an e-boat, an electric. about an e-boat an electric powered boat that's going to be stopping between Watertown Square and I think the Science Museum Bridge at various spots along the water and you know I I really think that we should be putting this to as a top priority because there's a lot of things happening and these things take years in the making and there's really no downside of prioritizing ferry transportation so I but one of the challenges of course is vehicular access to the ferry terminal and how can we mitigate that how can we make it more doable for those who don't have a car to take advantage of the ferry and you know perhaps have smaller depots so it's not a big burden on any one neighborhood.
It's kind of transportation but also kind of off topic as a personal aside I'm quite interested in Chelsea's Quiet Zone project I feel that's just been getting like pushed back and pushed back over time.
Say which project?
Uh it's called our Chelsea Quiet Zone project so trains don't need to flare through every intersection.
You miss wasn't that one of those things where we missed some sort of dead important deadline and then we're stuck with the noisy trains for until we build a certain crossing or something like that Joan what was the story on that?
I have some history with this project it's I'm the one that started it.
You need to open the can of worms.
Sorry if the chair going yeah.
No not a problem it's it's a frustrating one for me because we got a notice twenty years ago from FRA that you know they were going to institute blowing the whistles again and unless we built crossings that were safer and then by that they mean instead of just crossings at two quarters crossing out four quarters at the time they gave an estimate that this would cost about sixty thousand dollars our engineers said no it'll cost about ten times that amount for each crossing so it got delayed because we'd found to find that funding and then you know we got some thought from powers that be that they weren't going to force it yet pandemic came they had nothing to do they found out that we weren't doing it and then they pushed for it I know the DPW did have some their engineers look at it I don't know what what the product the where it went from that I just I just don't know because I wasn't involved in it after that.
It's potentially still up in the air while we look at how we would acquire the funding just to do over all the crossroads that are required by the MBTA slash state yeah so Eric we're we're kind of that one might be on the long finger.
At one point there was federal funds to help us but with the administration that's me we're losing federal funds.
All right well Jessica what you were suggesting is you know about the connections that are missing it would be helpful if people could you know email me some of your ideas and I could sort of compile it all into one you know some feedback that we can hand over to the Pallante Committee.
So also on the topic of trains except on topic there's also the potential to add a stop at our Forbes site if any future construction occurs there.
For the festal?
For bus or?
On commuter rail?
Or commuter rail?
Yeah.
Oh cool.
Commuter train.
There was one at one point right?
I think so but it was before my time.
All right so like Sarah said I think if you have other thoughts email Sarah individually do not email everyone that would break open meeting law and Sarah can kind of synthesize these comments to provide back to the Pallante Steering Committee we of course were taking minutes so we will also send those out and that can be also used and also finally I think we can try to like when these plans and projects kind of come across our own sort of view we can try and send it out to the planning board I feel like with the you know we have a permanent legislative planning department and then there's a housing and community development department and HCD tends to do more of these like larger plans so I feel like I'm not as like connected in them but when we do hear of them I think we can definitely try and like send them out just so y'all are a bit more well versed of like what's going on.
Yeah I think it would be helpful to have a map that shows the proposed ferry locations and like what you were suggesting for instance Eric about the a train stop at Forbes and then we can begin to think about how people can get around the harbor with these various modes of public transportation and you know dissuade people from using cars because it becomes more and more convenient to get from point A to point B but if we have a map then we can have a you know more productive discussion about it.
Would you like us to create a map because I also John you might know I I'm not sure where this ferry project is at or if there's even proposed locations.
Well there's a new.
There might be I I'm just not as.
Director of Ferry Services for the MBTA and I I saw one map with the ferry stops that are already existing but I've certainly heard discussion about future ones and you know with some of the developments that are happening in Everett for instance so that anything along the Lower Mystic it would be helpful to hear what are potential locations.
Ferry sites have been looked at over thirty years I've been here most recently by the Boston Harbor Association and that was pre-pandemic so I don't know how realistic they are or whether they're still being studied or not.
Related to that is there water taxi access in Chelsea?
No.
No is there any space that might accommodate that that anyone's aware of?
Well at one point there was a ferry from the pier over at Mary O'Malley Park.
Yeah.
That was thirty one thirty one years ago.
You know a water taxi might be the better way to better term to use because when people hear ferry they think of you know lots of big infrastructure I'm just thinking of a touchdown point.
And amongst Boston there is it's viable you know from East Boston into like the city proper the water taxi is effective and there's stops you know through like throughout the harbor you know and various points to you Boston Charlestown.
But most of the water taxis or 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 ferries that are operating in the MBTA are being subsidized by the MBTA so they're not all generating enough to do it on their own they're all need subsidies.
Right right.
John I have a question for you in regards to bike lanes and bike connections with other communities so do is there is there any discussions with like Everett and Revere to connect bike lanes through our city or I mean to for for us to be able to connect one so so you have the new bridge going into Somerville that connects Assembly through essentially Everett do we have the ability to have conversations with Everett to connect you know what I mean to connect all the all the dots on that one?
Well we when they built the Silver Line connection and they built the Greenway adjacent to we pushed hard for a connection to specifically to the Bike to the to the Sea project there is a little issue at the connection over in Everett because you would have to go over existing communal line to get there so that would so they've been working on that for a while and we also pushed to get it to East Boston as well the only part they built that bridge with only one sidewalk on it but we are pushing for it as what the current plans are I will check with Housing and Community Development and get some answers for you.
I I I think this should be part of our master plan is that that connection to our our communities should just be part you know incorporated that it connects all our communities and just gives access points to during the good weather and hopefully recreations you know the ability to do recreational slash exercise yeah and I love the idea Bike to the Sea I mean connect the whole North Shore.
So what are we going to tackle next month for topics?
Honestly I can't remember the four categories we said but I think.
Okay I had yeah I have them right here but I didn't know if you wanted to follow that same format but I have so this is transportation I have infrastructure more like you know climate resiliency type of infrastructure and maybe some of these some things sort of overlap with transportation but like the Tobin Bridge for instance.
Yeah I mean would you want to do infrastructure or we could do cultural and historic preservation because the design guidelines actually were just finalized that the Historic Commission was working on so.
So that would make sense to do that next month?
Yeah cultural and historic preservation.
Okay.
All right cool so I will email out to everyone those design guidelines and any other kind of projects or plans related to historic and cultural preservation and I think we'll do the same kind of framework strengths weaknesses opportunities threats.
Maps.
And maps and if anyone has more comments around transportation mobility email Sarah individually and yeah we can try to create a map that includes like transit routes potential ferry stops that if you have more thoughts on the maps please email me and we can try and create something for for next meeting.
I can summarize that this discussion and send it to you with a list of the helpful maps.
All right cool definitely all right I guess pass it back to Tuck for adjournment.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to leave.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you in July.
One more comment about Pallante the the survey is still up so if you haven't taken that yet it's going to be up for the.
Yeah through the end of June.
Okay.